Evening, Ewen. I have seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Before we call roll, I have two issues to address. First, Councilmember Elsah will not be with us tonight as he is in the hospital. He has tested negative for coronavirus. However, his absence at this time is indefinite until more is known about his condition. Please keep Councilmember Elsah and his family in your prayers as the doctors work to learn more about what is causing his ailment. Second, I want to address the issue that we, on how we conduct our meetings. I've had some comments from the public and a couple from councilmembers that we are not being respectful in how we conduct discussions. While we are doing the go-to meetings, I ask everyone to use the chat to ask to talk and when you wish to speak. That way we can get it better flow so that we are not talking over each other. Under formal meetings, members refer to everyone they say as to the presider of the meeting. In the House of Representatives, they say Madam Speaker. So you should do similar here. When you wish to say something, begin by saying Mr. Mayor, then wait to be recognized. This lets everyone know you are taking the floor, but do not do this while someone is in the middle of their statement. Though we are not under as formal a standard as the US House, our policies are intended to give our discussion structure and order. Do not attempt to, do not interrupt fellow councilmembers, the mayor, staff, or invited speakers. There are a couple of exceptions to this. The primary one is to call a point of order. This is done when you believe someone has drifted too far off the agenda item. For example, an agenda item for the Woodlawn project and they start talking about sewer system on Webb Road. When you call a point of order, I as the presider of the meeting have to make a ruling on that before the meeting can continue. I anticipate this to be a rare, but we have had one or two occasions where it may have been appropriate for someone to call a point of order. I've asked our city attorney, Ms. Kelly, to provide training with our council on rules of order, Bob's Rules of Order, and some additional basics on Robert's Rules of Order at our next workshop. This council has not had this training, so I think it's well overdue. Please help us by doing your part to respect each other's thoughts and statements during these meetings. It does not matter how passionate you are about the subject or your input. We must allow to have a fair opportunity to complete their thoughts. That being respectful and recognizing that each other's person brings important perspectives to the meetings. So with that, I'll call, I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jeff Elsah is absent. Dr. Joel Schroeder.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
Mr. John Welch.
Present.
Ms. Diane Nguyen. And we have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. Opening prayer. We have Mr. Mark Poson, pastor and resident, is here to lead us in prayer.
Down, prayer. Father, we thank you so much for your love, for your presence. Father, we come to you in this time of so much unrest. We just call upon you for just your peace to minister over. Father, I thank you for our mayor, city council members, administrator, staff, time that they give. Father, as we pray for this meeting here this evening, Father, we pray for many other city meetings, state officials, our national leaders, as they make decisions. Father, we just pray your wisdom, your peace granted. Father, we just pray that tonight, if you would just grant your presence, your wisdom, your discernment in all the discussions, all the decisions that are made. Thank you for your presence.
Amen. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item five is determine agenda additions. Are there any agenda additions by the city manager or councilmembers?
I have none, Mayor.
Hearing none, we'll move on to item.
A minute, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Under the consent agenda, we have the minutes, but we have, don't we have something else? Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Never mind.
Okay. Glad to be so polite. Okay, so moving on to the consent agenda, it contains only the minutes of the May 19 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
I approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
All second.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item seven, discussion approval of appropriations ordinance. This is typical appropriations ordinance for basic city operations. Any discussion of the appropriation ordinance? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Schroeder.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appropriation ordinance two dash.
Twenty dash ten.
Excuse me, answer it. Twenty dash ten.
Thank you for the correction.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have first, Dr. Schroeder, and second by Councilmember Nguyen. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item eight, city requested appearances. We have Grant Glasklow with NIA Martens is here to present their marketing plan for Bel Air owned property. Mr. Glaskow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for picking up and getting here, getting a chance to go through everything. Is it possible to do this? Father, I didn't have my turn. That's why we went through it that way. So in front of each of you are marketing teams for various properties. Our overall goal with this is to present all the properties to be very clear and precise. If anyone is searching for land, it needs to be able to find this information and have very good information. That's why we separated it out into multiple different parcels that's been searching for industrial land that they see. Available partial land or residential rental plans. The Sunflower Commerce Park, we announced we put aside with drone, there's really good photos and great sites about some of those. Clearly, this is a plan that we're targeting industrial users to locate and build their buildings on. We've had some good activity to get started. We do have some interest in some of the lots that have access to rail. One of those customers that are useful rail users, one would probably would need rail instead of a lot of what they're looking for. Those are both active prospects. Oh, sorry. I'll speak up a little bit here. Our, our marketing consists of, we're going through our databases. We're targeting all the industrial users that we know are in the area, anyone that we know is out looking and, and selling the points of this site. This is one of the few sites that has access to rail, which is a huge selling point and a great plus for the site and also good accessibility for K-96 and 254. It offers a variety of lot sizes and, and price points. So this is, this is land that can work for a lot of different uses. Are there, are there any questions on, on this piece of the Sunflower Commerce Park?
Question?
One question, and I had written out a few questions here, but so, but one that kind of does fit this area. And I, I've mentioned this to Mr., to our city manager previously, but with all the recent events, especially with our president pushing to bring manufacturing back from China and other, other nations. And the recent events, finding, discovering that so much of our pharmaceuticals and, and personal protective equipment is manufactured in China. What, what avenues do you think would be wise to explore to try to bring some of that to Bel Air? I mean, they're going to need facilities to, to produce pharmaceuticals and PPE and a lot of manufacturing stuff. I, I personally have been to China and done business there, but I've never, I've only exported to China, never imported from China.
Right, right. Very good question. We work very closely with the Greater Wichita Partnership, who also works with the Department of Commerce with the state. And when we, when there are multi-state, regional site selection searches, that's probably where those types of uses would fall. Somebody that's looking around the whole country, where are we, where are we going to locate? Well, they're going to start looking through the requirements on employees. Where are they shipping this, this product to? Any number of criteria when they'll decide on a certain location. So when, if there is a user out there like that who is looking in the state of Kansas, they would go to the Kansas Department of Commerce first, generally. Site selectors, national site selectors also do the same thing because that's, the state holds. holds kind of the first step on any incentives that are available through the set state or any monies available to, to incentivize economic development for the state. So we work closely with the partnership, who is our local representation for the Department of Commerce. And we've had multiple conversations with them, they have all of this information, and anytime that they have a project or any type of national search that we fit, we make sure that this information is there and that they have complete information to present for the city of Bel Air.
What about a concept of, of direct marketing? I know it's a little bit of like cold calls, but like, I know Pfizer has a facility in McPherson, and I, I know that there are some facilities, I believe, in the Kansas City area, and maybe they would be looking at expansions? I, I don't know. I mean, it's just something to, to, to question about.
Right, right. So, you know, another avenue is making sure we, we have this out in front of all the regional brokers, you know, because it's, the task of calling every company out there in the, in the state or in the, in the region is pretty daunting, but, but we rely on other industrial brokers or site selectors, companies that work with large national, international companies, because they work through that site selection process. I mean, Pfizer isn't going to be, going to pick up the phone and call me, that's just not how they, how they work. They, they have a whole system that works through that, but what, what we do is we put this information, make it available, so that anybody that's looking and, and through the state or through any property search databases, that they're going to access this information and be able to have the, the right information to assess if this is the site for them. Now, we also do cold calls, I mean, we, we, with working on lots of different properties, we hear of companies that are in town looking, and, and anytime we have that, we're out getting the information in front of those companies and trying to expose the property to as many people as possible, and we do that, cold calls through email, through social media, through internet advertising, and so forth.
What, what are your thoughts, or if you have any thoughts about distribution centers? I know, like Amazon, I know there's also, Walmart has a distribution center in Ottawa, but I do not believe they have one in our local metropolitan area.
No, they don't. This market has never been a, a large distribution center, similar to what you see in Gardner, Kansas, for example.
Yeah.
That, that is the, one of the largest distribution centers and fastest growing distribution centers in this, in the country, and really it is. And, and in fact, I think I heard that that was the fastest growing industrial park in, in the country last year. What, this area is, is, has always been more manufacturing base. Now, that doesn't mean we don't have a need for distribution. In, in the Kansas City market, Ottawa market, they built a million square foot warehouses. We built a hundred thousand foot warehouses, it's, it's a much, much different scale.
Yeah.
We, this market, there are developers that are putting up speculative buildings, about, about a hundred thousand feet at a time. There's a number of them out there right now that are still sitting vacant, they, they're, they take a while to fill up, and those will get filled up, and then a few, a few more will pop up. And those, those developers that, that are willing to speculate on, on distribution centers like that are certainly on our list, and, and we're in front of those, those persons all the time to expose them to different properties such as this. And, you know, we've, we've saw the news this week about a potential Amazon facility, just here a little south on, on Webb Road, they're leasing a, a building that's speculative construction, and, you know, that's, that's a type of facility that could, that could breed other distribution or, or other companies that need to co-locate with that, and, and so that's something we're focusing on to try to find, identify those potential uses as well.
Did we have a chance to talk with Amazon about that, or did that happen before?
That wasn't, that wasn't a land deal.
Okay.
They, they ended up leasing that building, so they came, they came in and looked for existing buildings to lease versus building their own.
I see, okay.
Is, is my understanding there.
All right, thank you.
The, the second marketing sheet I'll, I'll talk about is the, the industrial land that is located off of Greenwich, and the reason I separated these out, I almost called, called this the, the phase two of the Sun, the Sunflower Commerce Park. These parcels could be those large parcels for an Amazon or a Walmart distribution center if, if something like that comes around. Also, if we, if we sell out of the lots in, in the existing Sunflower Commerce Park, we would have the ability to go in and parcel out one of these pieces, so we would have more of the five, 10, 15 acre parcels, if that is where the demand is. So we have flexibility on what size of lot we can, we can, we can sell. But right now, we're focusing on the larger industrial users for, for these particular pieces. And really, across the region, it's hard to find large chunks of, of ground, we have lots of hag land, lots of big chunks there, but, but large tracts of industrial land can be, aren't in as big, much supply. So, you know, these, we don't get 80 acre, 100 acre industrial users coming around all that often, but when, when they do, we have land to present, so, and, and they don't have many options to look at, so that's, that's our goal with these pieces. The, the next marketing sheet I want to look at is the, the tracts that are off of 254 and then south on Webb Road that are more slated for residential and commercial development. We are really focusing on finding residential developers to, to take all our portions of these, with saving commercial lots for the, for the main street frontage in the corners. We believe that when, when these areas fill up with more homes, that the, the commercial retail type demand will, will increase, and, and so that's, that's our focus with these. We're marketing to not only our local and regional home developers, but one focus I'm, I'm really pushing is a, a national home builder customer. This area has never had what I'll call a national home, companies that develop homes all across the country, there are a number of those out there, and this market, we've, we've never really had any of that activity. I think this land is ideal for something like that, and I think it would be exciting to, for our market to see a new product that's, that's a little unique or different from other new construction that we see here. We've had conversations with some of those, unfortunately during the COVID, it wasn't the best of timing to, for those companies to reach out and open up a new market, but, but we continue to have those conversations and, and hope that when the timing's right, we can, we can potentially land one of those. And the last marketing sheet you have is the, is for the commercial land, the, right here at 53rd and Rocket, in front of the city hall building. We've had, you know, there, there's currently some interest out there in some of these parcels. We're, we're focusing on someone that can take the whole thing and, and present a, a good quality development that the city wants to see at, at their front door. You know, there's a planned park here, which I think is a tremendous selling point, there's public parking available, and, and these lots will lend themselves to a, a number of, of uses. So we're, we're working through a couple different potential prospects with these, and, and we're, we're hopeful that some of those will get some traction to that we can, we can get some of this land sold. So, and I think you also have a, a list of our current prospects and a, a summary of, of the, the activity with those.
Yeah, I appreciate that report.
Sure.
That's a good, a good report for us to see how things are going, how they're progressing, and, and what the prospects are. I mean, NSD identified, so that's a very good thing, so.
One, the, the top one there is, is a national residential home developer. This is a, a company I'm familiar with, I've had conversations with this company for several years about finding sites in this area, and, and this is a market that they have looked at, it just hasn't been the right timing. And I think at some point, that company or other companies like them will eventually come here, so we'll, we'll keep working on those. There's another home developer that has shown interest in adding acreage here to, to continue building homes, that would be roughly another 80 acre parcel. Prospect C, this would be for the Tierra Verde land, there was a, a prospect that, that expressed interest in a portion of that land. We have given them two different proposals on, on how, on agreeable transactions that we think with this, the city would, would be good for the city. We continue to go back and forth on those, there's, there's quite a bit of work to do there before we, I think we settle on anything, but we, we continue to work on that. Also for the Tierra Verde, one of the, one of the ideas that was discussed when we, when we had our listing meetings, was about the prospect of developing that area for large home sites. And there's a residential developer that has done that in this area and shows interest in doing more of that, and so I have a meeting scheduled with that individual Thursday this week to, to discuss them. And then a patio home developer, so this would be a, kind of maintenance-free type housing, individual homes that, that people would own, but, but a little higher density common area that's maintained by the association and, and taking care of, and they're, they're taking a look at that as well. So there's some interest in the Tierra Verde sites. Generally, a residential use is, seems to be where the interest is, and that's, that's probably an area that, if we can get it to residential and get some of those special taxes passed on to the eventual homeowners there, special taxes are acceptable in this market, anyone knows if they're building a home, generally they're going to have specials, so if we can pass some of those on to the eventual homeowners, that would take that burden off the city. For the industrial land, we have a 15 acre prospect, this prospect continues to be out there, it's going to be a little bit slow moving, we've presented multiple different parcels for them to consider. The parcels that seem to be the best, best fit would be off of 53rd and the Sunflower Commerce Park. They, we've also presented the land off of 53rd and Greenwich to them as a potential There's another 15, roughly 15 acre prospect that needs rail, and with the limited rail sites in the, in the area, the, the parcels that are along the rail siding off of 53rd, they've shown some interest in. They've, they have, I don't believe they've started corporate, their company travel yet since, since COVID pandemic, but they wanted to bring in some of their folks from, from Oklahoma and Texas to look at the site, and as soon as we can get that done, we'll get them here to take a look at that. Another prospect for the Sunflower Commerce Park is a trucking company, they're currently in this area, they have outrun their location and have searched for a while, they've been very patient and very slow moving, they've shown some interest, they're, they've, they like the location, they have concerns about 254 access and having to turn left onto 254 for their trucks, and so that's, that one may be a tough hurdle with them, I was pushing them just to go south on 96, but I know they have to go to all areas, so we'll, we'll continue to have discussions with them to see, see what options we can come up with.
One, one thing you might want to know about that, and I don't know if you're aware, but KDOT is, is in the early stages of, of looking at a interchange at Webb and K-254 to help solve that problem.
That would be a, a big plus for, for some of this industrial land, because 254, I think is a, is a tremendous arterial for the city and the industrial land, but, but having a, not having to turn left out, out of that intersection would be a, would be a, a, a big benefit, so I, I, I hope we can see that happen soon.
Yeah, the K-254 Correl Development Organization really pushed to get some things on that, and KDOT's listening and is working on.
Great, great, I wasn't aware of that, so that's good, I'll, I'll see what, if I can learn anything more about that.
I'll get you in contact with somebody.
All right. The last two prospects I have on the list are the prospects I mentioned for the Bel Air Commons Park and the commercial ground here. Since I put this list together, we've, we've had one other prospect come up that I'm pretty excited about, and Mr. Lasher and I have a meeting with this, with this prospect tomorrow morning, but it's a 70 to 80 acre industrial use. That's a big industrial use, we don't see many of these come around. They would be a land buyer, it's been described to me as light manufacturing, I, I don't know any more details than that on the type of use and, and what kind of manufacturing it is. We have presented several parcels to them for consideration, and we will, we will do everything we can to put our best foot forward and, and, and see if we can land this prospect if it's a good fit for the city. So that is a summary of our current prospects and our, and our marketing, I'm, I'm pleased with our, with our start and, and, and some of the interests that we've had, it's been an interesting last few months as far as trying to sell commercial real estate, but the, there's signs of life in the, in the economy, and there are people out doing things, so hopefully we can, we can get some of these like parcels sold here very soon for you.
Any questions for Mr. Glasgow?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say that, you know, this type of communication and presentation is exactly what I was looking for, and I think it's really helpful to understand what activity's going on and who's interested in, well, kind of who's interested, we don't know exactly who's interested, that's okay, but understanding where the interest is and how active are the prospects on this land and what are the concerns that, you know, potential buyers are raising is really, really good for us to hear, good for the public to hear, and good for us to, you know, have that information. So I really appreciate the, the format of this and the information that's on it, and then you come in to share this with us.
Certainly, my pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Great. Any other questions for Mr. Glasgow? Thank you very much, I really appreciate the input and the information, and we look forward to more successful reports.
All right, thank you very much.
Next is agenda item nine is citizens' concerns, and I do have two citizens that have asked to speak, so the first one is Melanie Penner. If you please come to the podium and state your name and address, you have three minutes. Why don't you get out there? I won't start the clock till then. And if you, if you feel comfortable with it, it might help to remove your mask because it would, we could hear you better.
That'd be very good for me.
We would hear you better. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Melanie Penner, live at 4100 North Batten Street here in Bel Air. My husband Ron and I have lived there for 28 years. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. The May progress report references crack repairs, curb and gutter repairs in the West Lake neighborhood. West Lake is a street, not a neighborhood. How and why do these individual street maintenances get addressed? Because we, Aurora Park residents, not just one or two of us households, but the majority of our neighborhood, have attended council meetings, we've sent letters, we've made phone calls, we've had Ann and her group come out, nothing resolved pertaining to our streets, to our satisfaction for all the dust. The experimental custom blend of road gravel, sand, and limestone does not solve our dust, if anything, it's worse. You cannot wash your vehicle and leave it out for any length of time with it being coated with dust. Usually, washing windows in the house seasonally, or for most of us anyway, is a great feeling reflecting the shiny, sparkly glass, but for our area, washing windows is no reward due to the street dust. The August 2019 progress report references Bel Air has refurbished the asphalt planer, which is a milling machine. Where is this milling going, other than filling potholes and the brush site? As we have asked for milling quite often in the past. It is time, as we award. It is time as we Aurora Park residents, I'm sorry. It is past time as we Aurora Park residents, our taxpayers, and our neighborhood is not an eyesore to the Bel Air community until it comes to our streets. Our neighborhood is one of the oldest in Bel Air. But why are our streets not brought up to today's standard of no dust? How long must the Aurora Park neighborhood wait for our street request to be heard? Preferably not long.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. Tonight, I'm going to give you a petition. And I'm going to talk about it before I introduce it to you. Years ago, when Edgemore was constructed, the milled asphalt was recycled on Aurora Park gravel roads. The majority of residents were happy with that milled asphalt. Over the years, the city has been asked to put more milling on our roads, to clean our ditches that have filled in with gravel, to fix our ditch slopes to allow water removal from the roads, prevent it from running down home driveways into garages, and prevent water from stagnating in the ditches. By fixing the slope, it would also make it easier for residents to mow in the ditches and it would be less backbreaking. Side note, we've been cited for not mowing our ditches. Aurora Park neighborhood has 70 homes on the gravel roads. The city of Bel Air has a total of 2.4 miles of gravel road. And in June of 2019, a street assessment was given to council at a workshop. It stated that 855 feet of that gravel road, which comes down to .16 miles, are in good condition. 1177, 85 feet, or 2.3 miles, are in poor condition. That means 93% of the gravel roads in Bel Air are in poor condition. If 93% of these gravel roads are in poor condition, it would seem that road improvements are necessary. While the city has made progress towards increasing the budget for the road improvements, Aurora Park feels like it has been forgotten. The list of road improvements for the past two years have not listed Aurora Park. Even though it has been said, the plan will spread the improvements throughout the city. Aurora Park Task Force has circulated a petition to residents along the gravel roads and the petition has received 84 signatures. The petition is requesting that the recycled milling from the Woodlawn Street Project be reused on our roads at no cost to the Aurora Park residents. Petitioners are hopeful the council will be open to consider our petition for the milled asphalt. And also, it's been discovered that the city of Bel Air has been charging a clean water fee to all businesses and residents, residential customers for 17 years, from 2002 to September of 2019. The statute that imposed that fee cited saying, "The price to the consumer of the water sold at retail by any system shall not include the amount of such fee." In hopes that council will allow our petition, all petitioners who have signed it have agreed not to pursue a refund of this clean water fee. And I'm going to give you the petition. I'm going to give you, or leave with you, and I only have one copy. Let's see. I have the petition here. Okay, we have 83 signatures. I also have a list so you know what addresses signed it up and it'll tell you what block and lot it is. I also have the statute on the imposition of the clean water fee. And I also provided a map to show you all the green, green stars are the people that signed the petition that were good for the milling. So with that, I'm going to close. Oh, and I gave you the assessment of the roads when that was done, the street assessments. Okay. So you don't think I'm pulling this out of the air. I've been accused of making things up before, so I wanted to make sure that you knew I did my homework. And thanks to the Aurora Park Task Force, who is here tonight, we feel pretty strong about this and we'd like to see council really, truly consider this for us, if that would be within your parameter.
Very good. Thank you.
I also.
That little alarm.
I know. This is what happens to our road when it floods. You have to rebuild.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for listening to me. I do appreciate it.
If you would please.
I'm glad I have an opportunity to talk.
If you would please give the documents to the city clerk.
Yes, I will.
And then ask her to distribute those to the council members.
Gotcha.
And, and of course, to Mr. Lasher as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say regarding this issue, it sounds like there's an incredible amount of history here and I'm sure some of it I don't know. And I obviously will be looking into this history, not only wanting to talk to the staff and whatnot about it, but if there's any other citizens that feel like they need to add information that maybe they feel like may not get going through the local channels here to the city, I would encourage them to email me and let me know any other information that might be pertinent as we continue to look into this because it sounds like this is a, has a lot of history and I'm sure I don't have information I don't know.
Thank you. Do we have any other citi, do we have any other citizens who would like to speak? I have no other requests, but if you have any opportunity. Ms. Fort. I thought I recognized you under that mask.
I'm Sylvia Fort. I live at 472 North Harding. And I don't know if you can tell by my breathing, but my asthma is being exacerbated by the road conditions. I've been working on an Oriole Garden and the dust is horrible. I fully concur with Ms. Stinson. We do have a problem. It's a health problem and it needs to be addressed. Incidentally, I have some huge rocks that at one time they put as, as the roadbeds. And I measured the rocks and, well, they put it on the surface. And these are rocks that were designed to be in the roadbed itself, not on the surface. So we definitely need this addressed and we need some definite training. Thank you.
Any other citizens that'd like to speak? If not, I will move on to the next item and we do, we will take this into consideration. We are going to, I've asked the city clerk to pass the information to all of the council members and to Mr. Lasher and we will have some, do this some thought, consideration. Okay. So moving on to Item 10, Proclamations. June 14th is Flag Day. I know that day very well. It's my mother's birthday, so. Citizens of Bel Air, Kansas greetings. Whereas Second Continental Congress adopted the American flag on June 14th, 1777, and whereas June 14th, 2020 marks our 243 years of displaying our American flag. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize Old Glory as a symbol of hope, inspiration, and pride for the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas in order to commemorate the adoption of our flag on August 30, 1949, the Congress, by joint resolution, designated June 14th of each year as Flag Day and requested that the President issue an annual proclamation designating the week in which June 14th occurs as National Flag Week and call upon all citizens of the United States to display the flag during that week. And now, therefore, I, Jimbinage, by the power vested in me as mayor of the city of Bel Air and on behalf of the city council and citizens of Bel Air, do hereby proclaim June 14th, 2020 as Flag Day in the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and ask all our citizens to reaffirm the ideas of our country by displaying our American flag at their homes and throughout If we pass that to the city clerk, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Nguyen.
If I could move back just a second.
Okay.
Before I, the Aurora Park area, my house is one of the oldest here in Bel Air. But I wasn't the original owner of the property. But those homes down in there have been here, as she mentioned, a long time.
Yes.
Has always been dirt road. Dirt road beside my house too, when I moved in. But now I have nice, big pavement and what have you. I know that they have been before council before. I couldn't tell you when or that kind of thing. But it, it really just hit me that I have never seen that in this time on the council or the time before when I was on the council. I don't recall ever seeing anything regarding doing road improvements in Aurora Park. And if they were, it was simply about grading the dirt roads. I would be pretty unhappy if I'd been paying taxes all those years and can't even get any room on the city budget.
Yeah. I appreciate it and.
And it's no, you know, it's no skin off my nose, although I know some of those people and their friends, their acquaintances for a long time. I don't know everyone over there, but, you know, we've spoken about it in other ways. It's not the only way, really, that they've been forgotten. So, but I think this would go a long way to improving the mood or the mode in that area, that if we concentrate on that very soon.
I, I, I think we should give some consideration to the proposal. I haven't read it, obviously, so I don't know all the details about it. I, I, you know, I, this is first I've heard about this, this concept. I, on the surface, it sounded like a great concept, but I think let's give us a chance to review it, give us a chance for staff to review it and make recommendations what we can do.
Well, I'm hereby saying I'm not going to let you forget it.
Please don't. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Item 11, Councilmember Reports, and I will start with Ms. Nguyen, if you would like to give a report this evening.
Actually, I have no formal report. I think I just pretty well gave you a report.
Very good.
So I'll pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Schroder.
I have no report.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the CCUA meeting last week along with David Floyd and yourself. And the big item for discussion in the CCUA was around a $60,000 pump that needed replaced, a submersible pump for one of the sewer treatment items. And that, that was a pretty big expense for the CCUA that was unexpected and depletes an entire budget line item for the CCUA. And so that certainly was not good news, not something that we were looking for. But the, the sewer does need to continue to be treated and so the CCUA board did, of course, approve that replacement pump. And so discussion was largely focused on that. We are having a special meeting next week, on the 4th, Thursday, the 4th, to have a budget workshop for the CCUA. We're going to go over the, you know, proposed budget in, in quite a bit of detail. And so there will be an additional CCUA meeting as we prepare for the budget. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Welch.
No report.
Thank you. I do have a few items to discuss, so I also attended the CCUA meeting on Thursday, May the 28th. The Tech Committee and the CCUA Board agreed to look at the possibility, and it is only a possibility at this point, of a CCUA contract with the city of Wichita as a second source of water. That would be replacing the individual contracts with Bel Air and Park City currently have with the city of Wichita. Wichita seems to be amenable to this concept, so further discussions are in order. No timeline has been set for this, but it is a conceptual idea that we're looking at. The Tech Committee also laid out a timeline for finding a replacement for Mr. Randall Harris, who is, intends to retire on April 1st of 2021. And he's the guy who runs that facility. So he's kind of important, important piece to the, to the puzzle. I did participate in the governor's teleconference on Friday, May the 28th. As everyone may know by now, the governor has made her COVID-19 executive order, orders advisory in nature and not mandatory. With that, Cedric County has also moved to make these phased opening plans advisory, not mandatory. It's actually very good news as it gives us the freedom and flexibility to make local decisions and have some level of confidence that they will not be at risk of changing executive orders. So Dr. Lee Norman explained good trends in the data that KDHE is tracking. Almost every county, except Shawnee County, the Topeka, where Topeka is, is showing downward trends in infections and hospitalizations. In fact, Cedric County, while containing the largest city in the state, meaning Wichita, has one-third the number of infections as some other counties in the state. So Cedric County ranks seventh in the state in terms of infections at 582 cases as of yesterday, June 1st. As I said, I would do, at our last meeting, I sent a letter to Governor Kelly on May 20th expressing concerns about the arbitrariness of the executive orders. I cannot say that my letter prompted her to move to the advisory nature of the executive orders, but it's clear she got the message that Kansas wanted out from under these orders. So that was good. But with these events, we now have our freedoms restored, but that comes with responsibility. I encourage all citizens to continue to practice the social distancing when in public, wear masks as appropriate, wash hands frequently, and refrain from touching your face with your hands. These practices are showing good results in reducing the spread of the coronavirus. Last week, Governor Cuomo of New York met with the President and said he encouraged the President to push for an infrastructure bill. That was very good news, that a more prominent politician are championing a similar idea that I put forth a couple of weeks ago. Maybe we will see some real results on that front, but never count chickens before they hatch. Ideas becoming law can be a treacherous road. A letter of support to Governor Cuomo's idea is being sent to him and to copy to Governor Kelly. If anyone is interested in supporting this idea, please send letters to our U.S. Senators Moran and Roberts, as well as Congressman Estes. Feel free to copy to Governor Kelly and/or Governor Cuomo. The killing of George Floyd has, was a senseless and tragedy and clearly an excessive use of force. The First Amendment gives us the right to freedom of assembly. I support that right of anyone to publicly protest when they have an issue with any government action. In fact, I may even join such protests if I see it to be peaceful. I condemn the rioting and destruction we have seen over the past week. Peaceful protest was the mantra of Dr. Martin Luther King. When protesters turn to violence, they insult Dr. King's legacy. We are fortunate, we have not seen such violence in our metropolitan area. There was a small incident in Wichita last night. And I ask and applaud everyone to participate in these protests to keep them civil and nonviolent for the common good. As many of you know, whenever I hear of a blood drive in Bel Air in advance, I try to get the word out. On Saturday, May 30th, Sunrise Christian Academy sponsored a blood drive held here at Bel Air City Hall. I never make appointments for these. I never make appointments for these. I showed up at 10:00 a.m., and I was the first one in the door, and to my surprise, all appointments were filled, so I didn't get to get blood Saturday. Talking with the coordinator at Sunrise, she's never seen that happen before, and I've never heard of it happening before. It may have, but I just, it's extremely unusual. So a big thank you to the citizens of Bel Air who stepped up in supporting that blood drive. Your contributions are helping save lives. And also, lastly, on Thursday, May 28th, Congressman Estes announced the winners of this year's fourth Congressional District Art Competition. Two of the four top winners were Bel Air schools. The first prize went to Amy Weber for her painting Jade, done in oil. Amy is a student at Northeast Magnet High School. Amy also had honorable mention for another oil painting, Saturated Soul. People's Choice went to Erin Henry for the portrait of a singer done in pencil. Erin is a student at Sunrise Christian Academy. So congratulations to these two young women for such outstanding achievements. They represent Bel Air as a place to live and raise family. Life is better on the edge. And at that, my report. Moving on to city attorneys' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, as we attempt to balance public health concerns with constitutional protections, an interesting ruling came from the Supreme Court this week on Monday after considering a California case where a California church was arguing that restrictions on public gatherings that they were subjected to treated them as houses of worship differently than businesses in similar situations. This was the first opportunity since COVID started and some of these rapid-fire law regulations have been put into place by different governors. This was the first opportunity for the Supreme Court to weigh in, and so everyone was interested. I won't bring you every Supreme Court ruling, but this one might implicate some things we do. The court ruled in that case that after reviewing the way the restrictions were placed, those restrictions treated houses of worship similarly enough to businesses and other groups that might gather, such as concerts, venues, lecture halls, schools. The court found that since the houses of worship were being treated closely or similarly to that, that the restrictions were justifiable and that they would not go on to hear the case. So though that is not a ruling that is forcible on us, it does give us some guidance as to how the court sees it. It was a 5-4 ruling, so it's not like the most like black-letter guidance, but it does help us as Bel Air starts, has to step in at some point and make restrictions on different groups or treat groups in certain, in a certain ways, businesses, churches, different groups. We can kind of consider this, that somebody mentioned arbitrary earlier, that so long as we're treating the groups similarly, it seems to be consistent with the way the Supreme Court is tending to look at these cases right now. So there's some news on some of the first rulings on COVID. Another item that came up last week, that the council requested clarification on when the mayor votes. I have a short memo to pass out to council, but just for the public interest. The mayor votes whenever council, in cases when the council is equally divided, and if the, if a majority is required for that motion and there's a tie, then the mayor would vote to break that tie. And that's consistent with Charter Ordinance 14. The mayor votes in planning and zoning matters. Whenever we have a charter ordinance that would need two-thirds of the majority, the mayor would vote, because charter ordinances require passage by the whole governing body. The mayor would vote when it's time to suspend or remove an appointed officer. Again, that's a vote of the whole governing body. And in certain cases, when the city manager is needing authorization to sign certain contracts and agreement, contracts or agreements. Again, that's general information, it just kind of sets a framework for when the mayor votes. We would deal with, obviously, specific situations that tend to be on the fence at that time and considering facts. I can't say we've always followed that pattern in the past with voting, but this is the guideline from our policy, our charter ordinances, and this is what we, you know, will absolutely endeavor to do. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Schroder.
I have a question. I just want to make sure I understand the process here. So today we have four members.
Yes.
If we had a vote, or we split, would the mayor vote to break the tie today?
Maybe.
Maybe.
It depends on if it would be, it would depend on a lot of factors. So if it were something that the mayor already voted on, then obviously he would vote in that. If it were something that didn't need a majority to pass, like it looks like you guys may approve a vacancy policy that would require less than majority to vote. In those cases, if the specific item you're passing doesn't require a majority to pass, that would be, it wouldn't be the mayor's vote. So maybe, but typically, yes. So if the group is equally divided, typically the mayor will vote to break the tie.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
To add maybe to the question of clarification on this guideline that you've laid out, I'm recalling that in Bob's Rules of Order, there may also be some additional qualifications outlining when the mayor votes. Does that have any impact on the process here, or I guess how, if at all, does it have an impact on that process?
Our Bob's Rule of Order should echo this requirement in our charter ordinance, but I'd have to look at it in conjunction. I don't recall any specific different guidelines.
Okay.
But I don't recall that they'd be inconsistent with this.
Okay.
So and if they are, since they're a policy, we would probably, we would need to revise those or clarify those, so we can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Keller, did you have, have another copy of that paper? I don't know. I want you to have one.
Can I research those online today?
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Moving on to item D, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to mention that the pool will open on Saturday, and the council received a brochure on that, but it's available for citizens. We will be doing the special guidelines that are recommended from the Sedgwick County and the state, as the mayor had mentioned, related to COVID. In here, you can see citizens can purchase day passes or memberships, talks about the hours and things like that, so, but it will, they do have plenty of guards hired, and they've been working on repainting and fixing everything, and they said they will be opening Saturday. Also wanted to mention that the brush site's gonna, will be open on June 13th. We actually opened it on May 9th and had a huge turnout, so those staying at home, they're trimming trees and such, will have a place again this month, June 13th, to take those to. And then our citywide garage sales are June 25th through the 27th, and that should be after all the recommendations for COVID are over, but obviously we'd encourage people holding garage sales to, as the mayor stated, watch social distancing and things like that, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
I have a question on the brochure that we received. I noticed that there's, well, I'll call it a waiver, it's not labeled as a waiver, but there's a contractual statement, it appears, that we're asking folks to sign. I guess I'm just curious if, and mostly it refers to COVID, I'm just curious if that's, I'm assuming that's new. If we're going to require that, does that also imply that everyone that comes has to come with somebody of age to sign that legal waiver? How are we addressing that? Is that something that needs to be discussed, I guess? It's just a multi-parted question for us.
Actually, the city attorney and I did discuss that, and I'll let her answer, because she came up with our final decision on how we're handling that, but we exactly talked about that.
Yeah, so in these cases, with, again, we're talking about emerging law, and waivers aren't emerging, they've been around for a long time, but with situations like COVID, we can't absolutely ensure that, you know, the pool is 100% free from any ill person or chances to become contaminated. What we have to do as a city is we have to take reasonable steps to notify the public. And so we discussed, the city manager pool, the rec director and I discussed what reasonable steps would be appropriate. Though they don't cover everyone, the waivers won't cover everyone, the waivers will only cover an adult signing up their family for membership, and possibly the people who that person shares it with. It's not all secure, it's not all sure. The signs also won't cover everyone. We're also placing signs, I think, at the entrance notifying people that, you know, it's a serious illness and similar to this waiver, but just that taking the attempt to get the word out, to put notices out, will help us in our liability. So yeah, the waiver is an agreement, and we can use it to respond to litigation if we need it to, but it won't 100% take care of the different fact patterns that can come up, but it's just, it's good enough to show that we're making an attempt to notify the public about it. Your question about whether it'll cover people under 18 coming, no. They, they won't, they don't have the capacity to sign a waiver.
And so this only applies to people signing up for memberships? We're not asking everyone to sign this as they show up to use the pool?
Correct.
Okay.
Moving on to item 11, ordinance resolutions and final actions. We, since the project, Wood Lawn project is being funded conservatively through the KDOT and federal funds, an engineering consultant selection committee is required to review the proposal, proposed engineering companies, and recommend to council the best firm. Engineering design selection committee consisted of the city engineer Ann Stevens, city manager Ty Lasher, Mayor Jim Binage, planning commissioner David Floyd, and council member Jeff Hawes. Since Jeff Hawes is no longer on the council, the governing body suggested a citizen be included. Staff solicited residents to apply, and we had two applicants that were interested. The two citizens volunteered for this are Tyler Dan and Mike Tom. I know both of these gentlemen, one better than the other. Either of them would be a great asset to this committee. Any discussion about these two gentlemen and how we want to proceed here?
Mr. Mayor, I agree, they both look like great candidates. My only concern is the same concern that Mr. Dern has, Dan, that he might have a conflict of interest because he works for a company that might be a part of the project, and just on that basis, I think we should go with Mike Tom instead.
Very good. I noticed that as well, but I didn't want to, I wanted somebody else at least to point it out to. I would have if nobody had, but okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, do we want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
I'll move to appoint city manager Ty Lasher, city engineer Ann Stevens, mayor Jim Binage, planning commissioner David Floyd, and Michael Tom to the Wood Lawn Construction Engineering Consultant Selection Committee.
I'll second.
First and second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. This is Mike Tom. Item B is consideration resolution authorizing directing issuance of sale of delivery of general obligation temporary notes, series 202020A. The temp notes will be for a period of three years. They cover drainage improvements in other improvements at Bristol Hallows and improvements at Central Park Third Edition. These allow the projects to be completed, final numbers determined, and houses to be under construction before special assessment to benefiting lots. All costs associated with this public improvements will be assessed through the lots which benefit. Temp note document has been reviewed by both our city attorney and our finance director to show their accuracy. So Kevin Cowan is here to, our bond counsel with Gilmore and Bell, is here to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schroder.
I think, once again, it's a pretty standard thing that we do regularly all the time, and it's in some ways pretty boring that we could just kind of do it, and I hope not to waste anyone's time, but I'm wondering if Mrs. Ty Lasher would be willing just to talk a little bit more about what this all entails, and I'm sure he's done it before and he'll do it again, but might be good for those people that are now old hats at this, to feel like we're not just going forward without thinking about it.
So I can explain how we got here, and I'll let Kevin explain the bond selling process, the temp note process. So how we get to this point is a developer approaches the city and says, I want to plat an area neighborhood. And so he works with an engineering company, and they decide where the roads are going to go, what the size of the lots are going to be, how many lots they're going to install in each phase, and then that plaque goes through the planning commission to be approved, and then eventually to the city council to be approved. And that sets the, the size of the roads, the names of the roads, the size of the lots, and things like that. So then the developer then comes to us and says, okay, well, I'm ready to build 20 houses in the next couple, three years, and so I want to put in all the public infrastructure, the curb and guttering, the stormwater drainage system, the streets, the water and sewer mains. And so they bring a petition to you, and council then accepts that petition. And then the developer says, okay, I'm ready to start construction. I'd like to have my first house go in usually in six months or something like that, so comes to staff, and we say, okay, we'll start with the bidding process, the design engineer, and, and then start bidding on the projects. And at that point, then, that's when those people want paid, and so we then start working with Ted and Kevin and our finance people to say, okay, we're going to estimate based on the petitions that we're going to need $2 million to do this, and so we need the funds for that project. And so we get with our finance people and Kevin Cowan with Gilmore and Bell, and they start putting the documents together, go out and sell the bonds or the notes to pay for those projects. So Kevin, do you want to talk about what you've done?
Sure. And you made a recall in the last minute or so, we've done the authorizing resolutions that Mr. Lasher mentioned for Bristol Hallows Phase One and Central Park Third. Those authorize the city to issue general obligation bonds for those projects, and we have another state statute that says if you are authorized to issue general obligation bonds, instead of that, you can issue temporary notes as construction financing. And the temporary notes work really well for special assessment projects like this, so that you can get through the construction period and know exactly what the costs are before you go through your assessment process, and, and then when you're assessing lots, you are assessing them with all of the final costs. Nothing's going to change, you're not leaving anything to a later date that might change. So, so that's where we are. We had the authorizing resolutions, the projects are moving forward, and as Mr. Lasher mentioned, it's time to generate some funds so the city can pay for some of these costs. So typically, what has happened in the past is we'll have some public offering of the temporary notes, where you put out information, or your financial advisor distributes information that says, hey, usual suspects, investment banking firms, people that buy bonds, if you'd like to bid on these, you can. It's been a unique time in the market, and the financial advisor was a little concerned about selling that way, and for the City of Bel Air, this is a relatively small issue to sell publicly at 1.9 million or so. And so the financial advisor suggested that the city go out for proposals from banks, regional banks, local banks. And I think you've had a couple of temporary notes in the past sell that way, but it's been a long time. So the financial advisor put out that RFP wanted responses and received four, I believe, I have that information, three. A response from Clayton Holdings, which is Commerce Bank, Clayton Holdings is- A response from Clayton Holdings, which is Commerce Bank, Clayton Holdings is out of St. Louis, but they're a subsidiary of the Commerce Bank that we have here, Intrust Bank, and then US Bank. And they're all good proposals. Clayton Holdings proposed a 1.43% interest rate. Intrust proposed a 1.25% interest rate and US Bank proposed 1.44%. So very low interest cost and, and the 1.25 that Intrust bid was very, very good. So what is before you tonight would be to approve selling these temporary notes to provide the construction financing to Intrust Bank on what we call private placement basis. There's some advantages to that and, and it works better when the issue size is a little smaller, but one of the things you're avoiding is not having an official statement, which is a prospectus for your bonds or your notes. Not that that's a bad thing, that's just extra work and there's a little more expense involved in that. And, and so anytime you can get a direct placement done and get a real market rate of interest, that's a really good deal because you've made the deal simpler and you save some money. So, so that's the proposal from Intrust Bank, 1.25%. This is a three and a half year temporary note. Its maturity is December of 2023. It can be redeemed early in December of 2022. So with, and construction will probably move relatively quickly, but if the development is to a place where either it or the city is interested in moving forward with assessments earlier than 2023, you could do that. You could then issue your bonds and pay off those temporary notes. The issue size, I mentioned this earlier, is 1,985,000, and that was driven by the petitions, which totaled to 1,878,000, and that's purely construction and engineering. And the difference is to pay the deal costs. It costs some money to get this deal done, but the biggest thing is that the interest on the notes will be capitalized, so they don't mature for three and a half years. And, and again, it's temporary financing, it's construction financing. The city doesn't want to have to pay interest on that kind of on a current basis and have it come out of your debt service budget because you're going to issue permanent bonds at some point. So that's capitalized, that's included as part of, of the financing and that's, that's really what drives the issue size up a little bit. That's almost $75,000. So by issuing these, you'll cover those construction and engineering costs, you'll cover the interest on the notes in the meantime until you get to maturity. When you get there, and, and some of you have been through this, but we'll have a special assessment process where we take all of the costs, not only construction, engineering, the interest cost I mentioned a moment ago, the final interest payment will be an additional cost, cost of issuing the bonds, everything that's been spent to that point and everything that will be spent to complete the bond issue will then be the total cost used to assess. So that's a little bit looking forward, but this is kind of the first step in that. This will cover construction and engineering and the financing of those Bristol Hallows and Central Park Third Phase Two projects. And, and again, this is probably it until December of 2023 or actually several months before that, we'll have to start on the assessment process. You'll get to go through this in a few months because we'll have some temporary notes maturing and we'll go through the assessment process so you become an expert then. But that's, those are the things I wanted to mention with one exception, these are tax exempt as the city's governmental purpose issues always are, and that's obviously one of the drivers of the really low, low interest rate.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Cowan? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Mr. Cowan, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion to accept a resolution authorizing directing the issue sale of delivery of general obligation temporary notes, series 2020A, the city of Bel Air, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of any tax necessary for paying the principal of and interest on said notes as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
We have first and second, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
I O C is a consideration of revised governing body vacancy policy. We've had recent point new council member to council, several issues were identified in the current vacancy policy that the governing body wanted clarified. Council has discussed numerous changes over the last two workshops as well as our last council meeting and came up with a revised version on the agenda tonight. After our last meeting, I asked our city attorney to draft a version where a tie vote confirms the nomination. So two versions are in your packet, one where the mayor votes in the case of a tie and one where a tie vote confirms the nomination. I'm okay with either version. It was just a, an effort to try to address some concerns that were raised by some council members and so I, I just offered that out through, as a, as a possible compromise. So our city attorney can answer any proposed changes and any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
So I appreciate the second version of this. I know that was kind of the, the one contentious thing, I think, that remained in the policy that there was still a lot of discussion on was whether the mayor should vote to break the tie. And when I first read that proposal on just having it pass in the scenario of a tie, I really liked it, but then as I thought about it a little more, it occurred to me that it's unlikely that the mayor would appoint somebody that he didn't want to pass. And so he, in theory, should vote to, if he were able to vote, he would vote in favor of that person to pass. And so I'm not sure that it makes a lot of difference either way, except that in the case where the mayor actually does vote to break the tie, he has some accountability in the confirmation of that candidate and actually being on record as having voted for that person versus, you know, having nominated it and just having the council pass it in the case that he, you know, does vote to break the tie, he does have some accountability there. So as I've mulled that over and thought about it further, I think I still am of the opinion that the, the version where the mayor breaks the tie makes no sense to me.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schur.
As I looked at this, I, I saw no substantive difference between the two as well. I, I had not considered what councilman Smith just offered up as far as, I think that the mayor voting actually might give the mayor more accountability rather than less. And so I originally had been totally indifferent and I guess I still might be okay either way probably, but I guess I can see councilman Smith's argument that he thinks that this makes the mayor more accountable because he has to put his name to it in a more substantive way. And I would be interested in other council members' thoughts on it.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welch.
Given the recent information we just got from the city attorney and my research I did today, where the mayor votes in a tie anyway, I believe we should just strike that sentence in its entirety and fall back to letting the mayor vote.
Strike that? Can you clarify? I'm sorry.
Three C, number two in italics, it says, in the case of a tie, candidate shall be confirmed, or it says, and the mayor shall vote to breach the tie. I, I believe we should just eliminate that sentence completely. And then we will go back to the existing policies that, for everything else in the city where the mayor votes to break a tie.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Just a clarification question on councilmember Walton's proposal for the city attorney. If we were to not have a statement on the mayor breaking a tie, would the mayor in fact be able to vote to break a tie? And if so, why did that not happen in this last process?
So, good question.
Ms. Kelly, is your microphone on?
Yes, yes, sir. Can you hear me?
You've been a little, little quiet back there.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. No, I can turn it up.
Thank you.
Good question. It was explicitly written in the policy that the mayor shall not vote to break a tie. So this was one of those cases where the policy, as it was visualized by the previous council, was to absolutely keep the mayor from, from weighing in on that tie. So that's why you wouldn't have done that in the previous case. In the current case, as councilmember Welch is saying, you can strike that, it won't be there, it would revert to policy, to, to the, I'm sorry, to the charter ordinance 14. The mayor would vote to break the tie when the group is equally divided. However, if it's a contentious thing, it, without explicitly saying it, it could bring the issue back up and it could, you know, warrant, you know, calling a question on, you know, the mayor voting, it could leave it up in the air. Charter ordinance 14 is there. It may be worth it to clarify. It wouldn't be wrong if you didn't though.
Mr. Mayor, a comment that, the only thing I would say is that if we changed the other regulations, I guess, for lack of a better word in my mouth, then if we specifically stated that the mayor should vote to break the tie, that would override any other ordinance change or something that we made, correct?
Correct.
So if we're really worried that the mayor should be voting, then I guess we should leave that sentence in that the mayor shall vote to break the tie.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schur.
I, this is a very interesting, very interesting thing to think about, you know, the fact that the only reason you didn't, the mayor didn't vote last time was because we see that Smith said no and that's the default. That was my understanding on both, on many things. Obviously, the, the city attorney has tried to clarify which and which not, but my understanding with most things, the mayor does break the tie, which is why I, I kind of thought it made sense to have that be the policy the entire time. I would say on many things, I would be okay with Mr. Councilman Welch's kind of idea of just let it fall back to the policy because that's what it will be. I think that normally seems like a really good idea, but I'm kind of with the city attorney on this one, that because that, the trouble with this policy in the past is we're not all sure what it means and then we had to debate what, what it was. And so then we're, we're discussing the, the meaning of the word nomination and whatnot and we were, you know, not super sure. So I think leaving it in here, making it very, very clear, just, you know, limits that potential debate over, you know, well, it does debate right, the tie debate, right? And then, you know, Jack, you don't have to remember, go back and re-remember what all the rules are again and whatnot. It seems like, I just, I'm just more of a clarifying statement, I guess, is what I'm saying because the lack of clarity was kind of the issue, has been the issue in the past.
Certainly case ambiguity out there, right? Ms. Wen.
I'm kind of the same. I, the clearer we can make anything, you know, black is black, white is white, yes is one thing, no is another. We're also missing a council member that was very vocal and I'm sure he didn't do that on purpose.
Certainly didn't.
And, and probably, you know, since he's in the hospital, I believe, he probably has a very good reason for not being here. Is this of such urgency that we can't delay it until he returns or?
Well, it falls under that category of important but non urgent. It's, it'll become urgent if we have the situation come up. And then if we don't have the policy in place, now you're in that discussion about, oh, do we change the policy now that we're in the middle of a, of a replacement? You know, which can come, you know, I hope we never have to deal with this, but, but it's, it's.
Or I'm not here, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, right. But, but, you know, I don't ever want to deal with this unless it's for a very good reason, you know, John Welch becomes governor of Kansas or something, but.
Boy, I don't want that.
But, you know, I, I hope we never have to deal with it, but, but the fact of the matter is, we have to put something in place because I don't want to see the city go through what we went through last time. That's just too painful and it wasn't the first time the city had, had to go through that, okay?
You know, the thing I like about it is, is that, I'll use the term, that this is pretty cut and dried, this is the way it is, and I'm all for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I was just going to say that I, I think, I like having the, the clarity in this document. I think that it makes it really easy to understand what the process is and in the case that this policy is being exercised, we've all discussed how the, the duration and the timing of getting it executed is really important to us. And any question about who would vote in those situations that may require research or further discussion is just something that, you know, would be a potential, I don't know, would slow down the process of resolving and open seed. And so I, I do support that being in there. I do regret that councilmember Elsop isn't able to join us to discuss this with us tonight. I do hear that concern. I, I think it is fortunate that we've discussed this at length, in a workshop and also at our last council meeting, and so he did have an opportunity to share his thoughts with us there. And so I, I am glad that we, we did have that opportunity to discuss this at length for some time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schur.
I, regarding a missing councilmember, I think going forward something on this without a councilmember being able to put in their input is a mistake, but as councilman Smith said, we have went over this a number of times and I think we pushed it back to this meeting because councilman Welch wanted to take another look. And I think at that time, councilman Elsop expressed, had, had expressed all that he wanted to express at that point. And so while I do agree doing things without his input would be a mistake, I think in this case, he did have a chance to give all the input he wanted. And I think the only one who was interested in providing more input today and delaying because of that was councilman Welch and he had been able to do that. So I, I'm okay with going forward with it today.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welch.
I, I too believe we should go ahead and go forward. I would bet that councilman Elsop would vote against it the way it's written, but if we have enough to pass it without him here, we have enough to pass it with him here. Either way, we need three votes.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion?
Mrs. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I will move to approve the revised governing body vacancy policy as presented, the version that clarifies that the mayor votes to break the tie and authorize the mayor to sign.
We have a motion?
A second.
A second, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion passes three to one. Thank you. So the policy is the mayor shall vote to break a tie, just be clear. That's what he, what you said, okay. Thank you. Consideration of approving the 2020 community event schedule, Bel Air celebrates its 40th anniversary of incorporation this year. Staff has come up with a number of special events to finish out the year and also celebrates Bel Air's birthday. Our city manager has a presentation of the events. Mr. Lasher.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought I'd come up here so I could point out the, the map for everybody. Obviously, this has been a unique year. We were looking at doing celebrations the whole year long and our first event, which is typically the Easter egg hunt, was canceled because of the coronavirus. So we had to back up and reevaluate what we're going to do the rest of the year. We have a little more clarification on what's allowed through the governor's office in Sedgwick County. And so what we're proposing this year is to have a Fourth of July celebration, which is not something Bel Air's done for a number of years.
Long time.
So, yeah, that's kind of a new thing. And again, it's not that we're going to do it every year, but again, we're trying to celebrate the 40th anniversary of Bel Air. So we're looking at doing a Fourth of July celebration from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. We'll do our Fall Festival, which is something we typically do, and that'll be on October 17th from noon to four. And then we're going to tie in our 40th anniversary holiday party. So Bel Air's actual anniversary is November 26th, which is Thanksgiving this year. And so December 5th is, would typically be our holiday open house, but we're going to throw in some anniversary events and have maybe some fireworks then as well. So I'll go by. So I'll go by each one individually to, to look at. So the Fourth of July, we're looking at actually being here at City Hall. So about seven to nine, we'll have some fun things to do out in front, maybe some music. Cornhole, Rec Center would like to do a cornhole tournament. And we're talking about maybe some, some ice cream and some food. People come out and do a picnic. And then we'll have some fireworks. And then we'll, we'll clean up after that. So the idea would be, here's City Hall. And this is, city owns this across from City Hall. And this would be where the fireworks would be. And then, of course, the other thing that we talked about was if by chance things change with COVID and they said, no more mass gatherings again, what do we do? Well, then we could have, people could simply park at the high school parking lot and watch it from there. And maybe we not have any events, but just the fireworks. Or if people don't want to be involved with the things going on at City Hall, they could park over at the Isley, I'm sorry, Isley over here or the Northeast Magnet. And so what we're looking at here at City Hall, we would have parking. We would have, we'd close off right here, right in front of the City Hall where we can have some games and some food. Maybe have some music here. People could, could park all in through here. And people could view along Central Park Avenue or around City Hall, or at home. You know, if it's, it's close enough, people could probably see it from home. Then our Fall Festival, one thing new we'd like to add this year would be a parade. We haven't done a parade in probably 10 years. So we thought about doing a parade this year. Of course, have the car show like we always do. Then have kids activities and things at the, at the Rec Center. Back up here, did I? I thought I had a budget, yeah. Okay, so budget wise, we're estimating about $8,000 for the fireworks display and some of the other things. Obviously, the fireworks is the biggest piece of that. And then for the Fall Festival, it's a little bit less, a couple thousand dollars we'll have to come up with for like kids activities and things like that. So what we're looking at for a parade would actually be through Central Park. We've done it in the past through some Bel Air streets. Of course, we don't have a main street. So we looked at, because the always issue is staging, where it goes, where people can park, where people can sit and watch. So we thought this year, we could actually have the staging at Isley. The chief could close down the wood lawn short for 20 minutes or so, actually come through Central Park. And then it would end over here at City Hall where people could head out this way or load up their stuff right in through here. People could view all along, around City Hall on both sides, over here by the pool. There's parking at the pool. So we thought there'd be much more ability for people to get in and out and park. And then, of course, at the Rec Center, we would have the events out there like we always do, the car show, parking the boot trucks and things like that. And then our 40th anniversary holiday party would be here at City Hall. So from about six to eight, we'd have kids activities like we typically do. Santa would be here. One thing we're going to try to do is maybe some carriage rides around City Hall. Want to have some music, some hot chocolate, do some things outside. And then a much smaller fireworks display, about 10 minutes or so. Again, celebrating the 40th anniversary of Bel Air. The budget for that is, we're estimating about $5,000. So what we would do is, again, this would be for, on December, we'd have parking all around City Hall. We could close this area. We could have some fire barrels out there, some hot chocolate. This is where people could get on and off the carriage. And then they could just kind of ride around City Hall, basically. And again, the fireworks would be over here so people could watch fireworks out here from their home. So, so that really is the three events. The big thing is the budget. And the nice thing is that we have worked with all of our vendors and the people that we do business for or with. And we have actually raised $15,000. And that should cover all the expenses of this. Our budget this year, council did include about $10,000 for special events. But we know that we've got issues with this COVID and reduced revenues and things. So we wanted to try to make sure that, number one, we owe it to the people that donated to do some things. And we wanted to celebrate our 40th anniversary as well and do some different things this year. And then try to keep it within the money that we raised, that we generated. So like I said, not saying that the fireworks is going to be every year. It's just something different we wanted to do this year that hasn't been done in a long time. And so if you're, if you're comfortable with this, we've got a group that's planning all the events and working on getting volunteers and things like that. The next thing on your agenda is actually approving the fireworks permit because in our codes, fireworks events such as this are allowed, but they do require a special permit. We've, we've got a fireworks company that will do the fireworks. So the city just pays them. Sedgwick County Fire has, is fine with it. They'll have a fire truck out here on both events. And they have liability insurance and all those kind of things, so.
Question. Does the fireworks vendor provide a licensed shooter?
Yes, yep. They will be licensed, yep. And they'll have the required insurance. We've got those things and stuff, yep.
So did I hear you? I'm sorry.
Where most people go wrong is they don't have a licensed shooter.
So did I hear you correctly? This is fully funded with donations already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. That's great. Just, and you know where I'm going with this is, I want to make sure that we give recognition to all those folks who, who donated because that's a great thing they're doing for the city, okay?
And I've got plaques made for all of them that have donated. Because, because the donations have been numerous of them. Our businesses donated $1,500. And some of them donated 500. I think the lowest donation was 250. So those people were at 500 or $1,500. So we haven't passed those out yet because of COVID and things like that. But as we start meeting with our, the engineering firms and stuff again that did that, we'll be sharing those, those plaques with them so they can hang up in their office.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a couple of comments. One, I certainly appreciate all those donations. I think that's fantastic. When I first heard about the fireworks, my first thought was, I was pretty opposed to taking tax dollars and lighting them on fire. So I was going to have a pretty strong objection to that. I love to watch fireworks. And so that's wonderful that we've got donations to cover that. I think that's, that's fantastic. I did notice on the, well, can you clarify what time the fireworks display will be? I think there may be a discrepancy on the permit application with that.
So the, that would be the, the one on the fourth?
Yes.
I don't remember, it's, I think, this is what, this is again what I put together. So I was thinking about nine to 9:30, but I wasn't sure when it gets dark. So we're going to go with there, what they put in as, as the.
The 9:30 to 9:50.
Yep, because they're the ones that knew. I was just guesstimating on this presentation about when it gets dark.
I also do like that it's in a pretty narrow window. You know, I know that fireworks are a contentious topic in our community. And, you know, that was one of the things that I did hear a lot about when I went door to door. Some people love them and some people hate them. And it's a pretty divisive issue. And, you know, we do narrow it down to only being one day here in Bel Air is kind of a compromise. And so this definitely fits within that timeframe. The final question that I had on the, on the events was just kind of around the staff commitment. You know, I think all of the events that you've laid out are going to probably take a substantial amount of staff's time to coordinate that and, you know, arrange all of that. Do you have any concerns about, you know, what might staff be giving up to, in order to facilitate these events and to make all the necessary arrangements? Do we, do we have the appropriate resources to do, to pull this type of thing off? Because it's a lot of work to host these events. And I want to make sure that, you know, we, the day to day operations of the city and the other stuff that needs to get done is still going to get done with all that's added work.
Yeah, and that, and that's a good question. That's something that, that we talked about. As council is aware of that, when we looked at this year's budget, we'll be looking at next year's budget, was to fund more of the Chamber of Commerce to allow them to take over these events. That just started this year. And a count, or a chamber member or a chamber director was just hired a couple months ago. So it was going to be difficult for her to take on this. And we knew that we wanted to celebrate Bel Air's 40th. So one thing that we did do a little differently in the past, Tristan has been handling that. And she's been doing communications and assisting Ted and a number of things. And, and so we actually moved that over to the Rec Center. And so Ashley down there does a lot of programming. So she's actually taking that on. Of course, we know this year, again, it's a, it's a year, it's a different year for us. They are not having events until this fall. So it'll be October is when, or no, I'm sorry, August, September is when they'll start back up with their programs of soccer and things like that. So she has the time and the Rec Center has the time to actually work on these projects. So it seemed to work out well this year. And that's why I said this is a this year deal. I'm not sure what it'll look like, if anything will happen next year. But this is for this year.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welch.
I have two questions. Since that's going to be out in the middle of a grass field, are we going to have any problems with a fire hazard?
No, so one thing that we'll do is we'll work with the, the farmer. And all they said is it needs to be cut. Well, so we have a farmer that actually hazed that. So we're getting in touch with him to have it haved by the first of July. And the fire department was fine with that.
And my second question, the Fall Festival, is that going to conflict with anything else going on with the Rec Center?
No, so the, the thing that we have done in years past that actually worked is, you'll, you see that that's kind of starts at noon. All the soccer events are going on in the morning. And so the nice thing that we like about that is some of the people that actually come out for the soccer stick around. Their kids play on the, the inflatables. There's food out there. So it actually kind of helps with having participation.
And have you considered closing one side of that street so we don't have traffic backed up?
At the Rec Center?
Closing into parking.
We haven't. That's probably something we should look at. The committee that's putting together all this includes a, either the chief or his lieutenant comes to those. So we'll mention parking at the Rec Center because I know that's an issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schur.
I'm not a great event planner, so I don't have any particular comments on this. And it's essentially free because of all the generous donations. So I'm fine with it. My only question would be, of all the council members we have, Councilman Elsop might have some of the best insight into this of any of us. And his opinion would have been the one I would value the most as far as looking at this. Do we, is waiting another matter, Mr. Lasher, is something we really need to do today to help you get a little more? You know, what are we, what are we thinking as far as that?
So two reasons, I would say, I would request that you take action tonight. One is, we've got to get the signed agreement for the fireworks because the fourth is obviously their busiest time. And so we need to get that signed agreement to them. The other issue is with Mr. Elsop, or Councilmember Elsop, not sure that he'll be to the next council meeting or it's just in the, in the air. So I would hate to say, let's wait till Mr. Elsop comes back and it's two months. You know, we, I just don't know. And so that's my concern, is not telling you that I know he'll be back next week. And we could easily do it next, next council meeting.
So one of the good things about the timing is that you are right at the longest days of the year. I mean, the 21st of June is actually officially the longest day of the year. But, you know, you're, you're very close to that. So you will have, it'll be dark, it'll be still some light at nine o'clock. So 9:30 is a little early for that, but it'll probably work.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
But I think that's good. I appreciate the, the plan. And I appreciate your explaining the route of the parade and that, those things. Because I know we had some discussion about that. Didn't understand it earlier, but now we do. So that's good. And I, and we've talked about, talking with the residents of that area. So they're, they know well in advance that that's what the plan is.
Right, right. And of course, that's in October, so the parade will be in October.
So we got time. We want to make sure we don't forget that they need, they should know. So I appreciate that. Any other discussions or questions for Mr. Lasher or, or just among us?
Mr. Mayor, it does sound like, you know, if I think about it, June 2nd, if we waited till the next, next meeting and Mr. Elsop was able to be here, that'd be two weeks. That's only a couple of weeks out from the event. I can see that putting quite a bit of pressure on those planning it. Even in the best case scenario, and of course, worst case scenarios, we still only have four of us. So I guess I, I'm okay with looking forward to this seeing that I don't have any issues with the financing. And I am not a great party planner to ask anyways.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Wynn.
I would like to make a motion to approve the community event schedule as presented by the city manager.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, same sign? Motion carries four to zero.
Some of you may not know why fireworks is such an issue out here. Years ago, there was a fireworks display and a house burned to the ground. And those people lost everything.
I remember that.
And so, yeah, it's been a little touching.
It was just neighborhood fireworks, I think. I don't think it was a real display.
It wasn't a display, it was neighborhood fireworks.
No, it was just regular fireworks, I think.
Right, right, yeah, it was regular fireworks.
And it was kind of wild, wild west. You could shoot anything because bottle rockets were one of the things that all the kids loved. And you didn't want to leave your home because those will lay on your roof and smolder for quite a while.
Yeah, being more than one fire like that, yeah. You're absolutely right. They're very dangerous.
So, yeah.
Moving on to item 13. We do have a need for an executive session this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I believe we still need to cover item E.
Go ahead, Ms. Wynn.
For the display permit.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. I'm sorry, thank you.
Too bad to forget that one.
Don't, don't forget that. Okay, item E. Thank you for, I, my printed printout last page, so.
Mr. Mayor? I'll make a motion to approve the fireworks display permit. Authorize the mayor to sign.
A second.
First and second, any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries four to zero. All right. Had to go to my supplemental pages, then. Thank you. So we do, item 13, we do have a need for an executive session. Mr. Lasher, about how long do you think we'll need on this?
About 30 minutes.
30 minutes? Okay. So can I have a motion for executive session for 30 minutes?
Mr. Mayor, could we have a short recess before we, the executive session?
Certainly we can. Okay, so how about we vote on the executive session, take a 10 minute recess, and then convene the executive session after 10 minutes? Is that agreeable? Is that agreeable, is that an appropriate process?
That's okay. I think the cleanest way to do it is to go ahead and have the recess, and then the motion for executive session will have that begin time in it.
Okay.
And it'll be specified, so.
Okay, that's fine. We can do it that way, too. I'm fine with that. So how much do you feel we need? Is 10 minutes too much, or does that feel right?
Five to 10, I don't know.
All right, let's go compromise, we'll say seven minutes. So recess for seven minutes. I start my clock.
You need to wait till we get up. Okay, okay, sorry. Kevin, were you ready? Okay, we're back in, back in regular session. Had an executive session, no binding action was taken. I'll take a motion for an extended executive session.
I'm going to extend the executive session by 15 minutes until 15:30 at nine forty-five.
Motion?
Second.
And second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All payers say aye.
Aye.
I'll propose same sign. Motion carries our executive session for 15 minutes. We back on? Okay, we're back in regular session. We had an additional 15 minute executive session. No binding action was taken. Back in regular session. Next agenda item is item 14, and that is discussion about a workshop. So, uh, there are a couple of issues we need to have workshop to talk about our 2021 budget, which the timeline requires us to approve that budget in August by state law. So, we have to do our due diligence now, and that's why, uh, it is proposed that we have a, uh, workshop on, uh, the January 20th, which is Saturday at 9:00 a.m., if that works for everybody. Uh, Ted will lay out the groundwork of our 2021 budget in that meeting, and Jackie will may cover a few items as well. So, is...
Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict on the 20th. I would suggest we move it to the 27th, or I can do it during the week, in the evening or something, if, uh, other people could do that. I don't know how long a meeting we're even talking about here.
Three to four hours.
Oh, we don't want to do it in the evening?
Yes, Mayor, I would think, uh, the, uh, some of it's going to be some, uh, for the new council members, just kind of bringing you up to speed on, on some of the land debt and all those questions, and then actually laying out what the budget is going to be proposed, and then some revenue projections for this year. So, yeah, I would say easily two to three hours, just for the budget, and then if Jackie's going to cover an hour or so, so we could easily be at four hours.
Okay.
Could we get preliminary paperwork on some of this to cut some of the time down?
Yeah, so we'll, um, uh, and that was the reason for the 20th, is we don't have, uh, the county gives us revenue projections for, uh, property taxes, and we don't have that yet. Um, they're supposed to get it usually the first of June, so we're hoping this week we'll get it. Um, and so, uh, by the 20th, uh, we could push it to 27th or maybe 13th, or, you know, we could do it in the evening if council's okay with three, four hours in an evening.
Are we still planning to have the June 9th typically scheduled workshop, or maybe cover what Jackie was looking to cover around training?
I think this is intended to push this to a, uh, a Saturday workshop instead.
Instead of having two workshops?
Instead of the 9th, right.
Could we do the Jackie training on the 9th and...
So Jackie question?
I'm fine with the 13th also.
Just do the 13th work with everybody?
The 27th would be a lot better for me.
27th is better for you?
Yeah.
Do others have any opinion? I'm, I'm good with the 27th myself, so, um... Okay, um, ouch. I meant Louisiana the next day, but that's okay.
The 9th also works for me. I don't know, we probably can't get through all that on one occasion, but...
That's a lot, that's a lot to do, to have ready for the 9th. I, I don't think the 9th is going to work for, for staff is, is really the issue there. Right? Do, it sounds like we have consensus the 27th work, so let's just, just set it for the 27th, okay?
Okay.
So, workshop 27th, we'll cover both, uh, the budget and some training for this year, so, okay? And nine o'clock, the right time? We need to make it eight o'clock?
I'd put it one in the afternoon.
Yeah. Some of us have other things to do.
We could run, you know, nine through one, and we could have like a working lunch.
That's actually a, a pretty good idea, I think. If that works for everybody else.
What was that?
Nine to one and have a working lunch.
Okay.
You'll probably have rolls or something for breakfast, but, uh, you know, I don't know, we'll see. Don't bring any from me. I'd do that, but that's fine. Others can have it. All right, so, so nine to one on the 27th. Any other issues to discuss before council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Smith?
I move to adjourn.
Well, second.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing now, I'll take the vote. All payers say aye?
Aye.
May opposed, same sign? We are adjourned.